Evening and happy September. As you can see, I now call our September 3, 2025 City Council Work Session to order 6:00 PM. Please note, the mayor has indicated that he will be at today's two or two. For a table track renewal with the recommendation to update those this evening, we panel, you know, floor.
Thank you. Thank you for this time. So the Laurel Police utilizing variation years. The L P D contract taser by in 2025. Trying to train into updated the taser This latest version of accents form. additional upgrade from our current taser as it holds 10 laser darts and can be deployed separately. Greatly The taser darts can be accurately like the previous taser from much safer position than in the recent past. This provides officers with more escalate situations, which is part of every bit of our before the levels of being previous at a 50 volt capacity. While the taser uses older neuromuscular section of voltage allows for smaller allows for and performance. With this new contract will also for reality training taser 10. Trainers will be training conducts and training. There's come with built in scenarios. We reduce firing at all their tasers. There was all the train. A trainer can read each scenario with the officer and order he can and we define this to be the next level type of training. Because they can actually see what their performance since our current contract expired at the end of August, we're asking this approval for is practical. The law recommends approval to purchase the 10 and VR trainers. Our department via 5 29, the purchase set taser 10 weapon as for the four VR trainer. So this will be 469,638 dollars. 93 six note. We have chose bond includes this freezer and all associated costs, including software. If something happens, save us 167,000 $6 and 20 funding for this to the L P D approved budget by transferring additional funds approved for other due so I that respectfully recommend that we in Scottsdale, Arizona. And my friend Mark's on visible for any question you have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are questions or comments from the council during this bid Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Your follow up? It's a sort of a soup to nut. So that's everything in there from the training to replace eyes. So this is sort of like a nuts package that we're talking about. Sure. Where are that?
Councilmember Simmons. You have also member Simmons. On the Laurel Department as well as Chief Ham Zinski. I don't see additions place on our for number eight. No comments. This bring our virtual mayor and city council on September 8 at 6:00 moving. We have another purchases and gun part context. We think for that should be coming back.
One excellent purchase. New firearm as a standard issue. We go. We directed apartment firearms subject. To review current department issue done. Possible replacement handgun, depending on the outcome. That is to the conclusion and me as the for the department. That change to a different weapons platform. Standard issue weapon. Believe that prudence and safety that this change at Tanner as soon as reasonably practical. Leads us to this current be adopted led to a final recommendation to consider number of handguns with a Walther PDP full size meter pistol, four and a half inch with dynamic trigger Magwell. And the prop two direct mounted optics. Stop being the preferred choice by a consensus. For him fitted as I mentioned retail for 1740 dollars per but the manufacturer dealer has total of nine 33 dollars 90 cents. Fully out. We did point gun third election by the manufacturer representative. As noted above, the each weapon outfitted is three question. Total cost of 4,000 could be another helping could not in a timely fashion. When they this this purchase and with it's project double via department approved budget. The needs of switching platform, the urgency I as
Thank you, Chief Ham. Is are there any questions or comments from the soul regarding bid recommendation? The purchase of new handguns? I don't questions. Has this on our agenda? I agenda for September. Station. So hearing additional questions or objections. Need to city competing on 8th at 6:00 PM. Ham providing context.
Thank you all. Thank you, Madam.
To the item of a from the local Department of Public Works requesting the approval of Ward the con repair and updates Ward Street and North View Court through LA 2601.
Council President Clark and the public seen approved for the award of track for place Ward Street and North project LA 601. This construction pair of concrete sidewalks, AD concrete foundation asphalt resurfacing it's in their entirety. The bid results. Department of Works has solicited the project resulting in the receipt sessions. Doctored extinct 2025 municipal center. Ranked from to high are as construction boat two and 107,000 hundred dollars. He is in 23,100 S M F L 204 thousand 30 cents. S recorded 276 733 dollars 60 cents. V construction L L 484 cents and M R B is 595,000 34 cents. Apparently certified minority funding for this project is available through the Snowden Place Ward Street and North View Court Improvement. It's recommended by the Department of Public Works that this contract, this project be awarded to VMP Construction of prize for the bid of 202,000 agency of nine 630 and I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Miller. Are there any questions? This bid don't see any questions or comments from the on agenda for September 8. Item responses. No additional questions, comments from the placed agenda for possible sharing our regular and council meeting 6:00 PM. Thank you, Director. Have more for agenda item number five. A recommendation for the next five years, 2025 to 2030 to open architectural and engineering services. We have Tim Miller. Tell bid recommendation, you
The city's have expired as of first 25 A and E selection was within American Public Works Association Red Book fifth patient based to renewal of A and E consultant QBF in compliance with the 952 means that the qualification tech neurons are primarily after Fulton select. This has been a two part selection. Unfood request for interested A firms admit an proposal that identified key staff on a city contract along their patients reason of past work. Each member of the committee reviewed their expression of interest proposal from the competing with resultant rating identifying a shortlist of five that it submissions. Process and of firm shortlist providing a formal presentation to the A and E selection committee. Question and answer session results of the top firms. A and E committee comprised of the following. Director Works, Thomas Helm, Assistant Director Department of Public Works, Armin Evaluation Results. The shortlist part one. This case of Fulton, Maryland Century volume, the of Columbia Bertis and Associates of part two. Technologies Century Engineering and Bertis and Associates. Funding for all the A and E consultants will be associated with assigned to eat any consultant. Will from designated design engineering should be approved by or from specific project funding that will be considered approved by the mayor and city council. It's recommended that the mayor and city council of Laurel indexed as select part two above. The tracks will be four year period with by Harley. Happy to answer any questions on this long but probably
Well, thank you for this. We are gated. Director Miller, does the have any questions or comments for Director Miller regarding this tract recommendation? For agents, please proceed.
And as for DP Dev say that you're also confident in the presented here just from your
I am. Two firms that are on this technologies and century engineering were for also on our 2020 consultant and associates as a new firm to that. The final three. I I didn't. I didn't want to influence anyone or at so to, you know, I have to work for them with for the next two years. Though I sat in on all the yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, great. I appreciate that. It helps.
Sure.
To have your confidence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or counsel? Oh, Councilmember James Cole, please proceed.
Madam President, unmuted before I raise my Director Miller, make sure there is no with cost awards based open ended kind you
Correct. There's no that for these firms. So yes, as we Ward Street project $200,000 in it just doesn't $35,000 may had allocated to the engine and the remaining 165 sharp. That's how we generally do it. Yes. Unless several streets that things remain and that was, you know, and that's gone full blown and have have today. Yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. I also had very similar to Councilmember Cole's open cost and agreement. Will they be consistent? Do they? But it sounds like you just shared with Councilmember Cole that there is no cost for where pretty quickly them and just bidding on them now ahead of time.
Moments.
Okay.
No associated with that selection.
Perfect so much. And my second question was, if you please confirm, Lane, what is a city you doing services for? So can I
Use them really for all our street projects. But works if we projects that we were storm X. We are using now for the dam Van Duzen Road Dam improvements and things of that nature. And they do a lot of the engineering their plans. So that's generally what use them for a lot of road work, transportation studies of that nature. Now, in a public works uses and then other wrecks made has handled that a study done on whether or not they would replace the HVAC units and the same consultants if they do other improved is same thing. Things of that nature, I believe, you know, Bailey will use them they can so as they have abilities, a lot of them have and so ECD all upon it as thing and as should they need, I'm just going to say, you know, you have a thing and you that should be left and one doesn't possess the public. So the occasions, just something like
Great. Thank you. To head of our comments in the council. If I don't additional I don't all questions, no objections from the council. On our agenda for possible or regular mayor and county.
Thank you very
All right, moving to the fourth Maryland. Development and vision regulations. Services and provide Bureau of Economic and Council Mr. Larry Todd. Floor. Thank you.
You and good evening. Three required by the city of to amend the city by development. With providing following of the law. So action to the the interim cell uses in areas of planned B is less case first three. From the areas assist to obtain such exception heated in zone if they're regarding have them and thank
Thank you, Deputy Larry Todd. Would you also
Good evening, President Clark, members of the council. Nice to see very clearly that protection put in really subsection of section 20 dash point 50 was to see this was adopted. There you go. And no one determined that was there. There that should remain there. You will see that there is a special exception in under the section. But we just why that should be an impediment allowing a special exception application to go forward. This has many files there. Hearings involve it doesn't do anything to inhibit processes that allows a party to come in and make patient exception that zone. That's anybody has questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tom. Do we have any questions or comments from the member Adrian Simmons has a question or comment? We have Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. I see member Adrian Simmons has a question or comment. We have Councilmember Jeffrey Mills.
President, thank you both for presentations. Very helpful. Also questions. Where's sure to have a text amendment moratorium if I understood. How is that implied or? By this or?
Um. Into no pro uh, it doesn't affect the councilman's. Would you? Uh, said it was just a. Look over thirty years. It wouldn't affect the moratorium. None. Um, we will move forward for special.
Gotcha. And then second. Think. By the sort of zoom. I P P, right? It's. That particular section. Okay. It's uh, do the other provisions of the section still apply for the interim? Uh, yeah, I think some of the other sections between them um are intended for only temporary, maybe for a couple of years. Was just sort of permanent retail.
Um, yes, it will be councilman. Um, all the stations up until you get G, which we would be amending still um place.
Um, maybe these are last question. Um, and Director Bor might be able to speak to this in terms of alignment with master plan. I know. Get lots of conversations. This. With sessions. We're not gonna. But then later. Want to do some is this harm at home with some of those conversations.
Oh, I would um. All in line with the master. Um, it's retail use. If the. It up. Master plan, so be. Consistent with what today.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Uh, back to you, Senator.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. We have.
Give my the president leaving everybody. I was just um wanted to know like. Like. The main businesses come. Um, town centers.
Um, I don't think it um, Councilman Mills. Think it would affect it. This is uh industrial researchology uh main. There's and um town center totally two different zones. They. Industrial, what types of businesses can be um in the in the research. Yeah, so those type of zones are too different. They wouldn't affect any. Area is zone.
Yeah. True.
Uh, we. I'm just thinking. About uh train. And so now um. They to. Location habitat uh be adjacent to. Red um.
Member Simmons, do we have any additional questions or comments? Regarding. This ordinance. Councilmember Simmons, your hand is up. Please proceed.
Yes, sorry, and to. Um, mention. Where this is um, as Director. I think it's sort of down where maybe LabCorp and sort of that. Is is sort of what currently is zone is sort of that I R T P zone. And so that's really that and maybe that. Very deputy. Only. Um, and uh, so it's it's. Every place. App. But yeah, I could. It's important to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Members. All right, with no additional questions, do any hesitation on September eighth. Agenda for. I don't see any. All right, so hearing no additional questions or. Or ordinance. Zero P on this. The virtual mayor and council for our first hearing. Thank you, I believe you for one more for agenda item number seven. Uh, which is ordinance. Which four for. Ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, sponsored by the president and. Custom. And the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter twenty. And and sub. One. Administration and enforcement to add. At point seven, validation. And since issued in her. Invite us with. And Deputy Director Monte Burrow, Economic and Community Development and also. Larry Todd.
Yes, oh, I. That over to. Sorry.
Sure. Thank you, Director Burrow. Appreciate that. Even a. Well, again, um, this. Has arisen where you have a situation uh where in a per has been issued a road. And this can happen. It happens, you know, frequently. Within Prince George's County and this this particular uh problem. Then. Stories County Code. Many uh it acknowledges the fact that there are situations. Uh, permit. And and. Times erroneously issued and that. The permittee who obtains that permit has basically spent funds. On the basis of the issuance of that permit. That. Not be. Early. But. Taking the permit and saying they cannot move forward. A. Process that has been in place. Of. Year in Prince George. They. I've worked that through the county uh for many years. And I think it's. To an issue such. Uh, certain findings that will need aid um by the uh case uh. The Planning Commission and the City Council. And that be that uh. The. Plant misrepresentation. Any of the permit or less. That at the top issuance of the permit or lack. No appeal or contrary regarding the issuance was pending before any. Uh, applicant in faith spending funds and or. Operations. By ones of the. And that the. Nation will not. Uh, so it has certain specific findings. It is a step. To uh. And at the end of the day, if the. But it is. Did that property becomes a nonconforming use, which means that it is simply if. Not in any. Be used. If the changes that are going to be proposed made to the property, it will require a. Any changes. It's um a nonconforming use. Run with the land. It not be. It can't be conveyed to other parties who would be operating the exact use. But. Doesn't have uh any other uh use other than those that would be permitted of whatever the property might be. Uh, so I'd. Be frankly beneficial to the city uh in a situation like. Provides for a very. Little solution. To. Yet without opening up the Pandora's. Issues. Beyond particular issue. Uh, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Todd. See a question. Member James Cole, feel free to proceed.
Thank you, President. I have a question on. Particularly on the test. I'm fine with where it goes. Planning Commission, but I'm questioning does it go? For this whole. As an appeals.
Well, to be honest, this was modeled after. And in the county. I don't see. Why it could not go to the Board of Appeals. The statutory in the city of Laurel. I think that'd be perfectly appropriate. And so if their desire to. Mission to Board of Appeals be the ultimate. Party. I don't think.
Mr. Todd, I don't. From it. Having served on the planning commission. Several members of. Uh, tip. There's a special exception. Does go to Board of Appeals. Doesn't all go before council, so I'd be comfortable proposing. Name. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Sid nor I. Comment, please. Feel free to proceed.
Yeah, I just want to. Make sure error. So I mean, I understand the Board of Appeals is something that. The applicant is challenging, but it's something that we did on our era. I. Leave as much as possible. Think this shouldn't. And it's. So I think because we either go to Board of. Or it could be approved by the. Board of Appeals as an applicant and something that they they trying to get done in the city. So I think we should show some um. This is some great. So at least restricted method we have our. Turn as well. Just wanted to.
Remember. Simmons.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I assume. Councilmember. Or this. Step. It's helped here. Certainly open. Said, you know, the Board of Appeal. Or that I decided it's one or the other, but uh it doesn't need to be in the normal sort of if a. One. Can. Comment on that. Um. To uh, just wanted to check. Um, sort of paragraphs, I guess, that are seven and. Is that edit that. Is there? Did. Together or they almost. The sentence. Um, and I don't know if that was the intention.
Hmm. It does appear that that. Either we can certainly.
Not like it's a solve, right? It seemed like. Together, it might have accidentally been broken apart. Um, second thing, um, it it definitely makes sense to me too to sort of say, hey, if there is. Or a mistake uh take on behalf of this. Can sort of resolve that valid. Seems, you know, um, uh, such a good thing to put in. Um. This is. Uh, what would you just sort of the degree of work required of it? Go through the valid. Test. Care to work for the applicant to have gone through the normal permitting process on it. A comparable. After through in the validation. Initial. Comparison, might you make of that for us?
Sure. Uh, Council. There is. Process and as with. Process. Excuse me. Oh, the. Okay. Um, and that will be a form application. Of the zoning map and a site plan, all. Should. It shouldn't be that difficult to. To application. This, of course, it will be. Reasons there's a hearing for. You people's or the city council. Um, but in terms of filing the app itself. Uh, really not asking much more in the way of. That that the app. Just. That the uh, it must, you must put facts to show that it would meet the finding that are provided. That the city find. So they have to go forward and. They. All expended funds and. It's on the issuance of the permit. Something they. Have. I think that's the essence of this. The show. Such an. But it's an undue effort.
Okay. Let's hope. And uh, one last bit. I thought I had two, whether there might be. Um, two. Um, acts for, because I imagine sometimes may be issued and it's a very simple uh fix and. More extensive fix for a more simple fit, a use and occupancy is issued. Supposed to. X number. Fire extinguishers. Actually issued you a new occupancy. Because. You'd have four. And the applicant simply say, well, okay, hey, I'll put up the fourth fire extinguisher. All. On permit active versus. Different scenario. Hey, somebody. Use permit in a place. Zone really different and they're in a wrong zone. It seems to be maybe maybe a sort of a simplified method can be made for. actions and then. For the more involved or what are your thoughts or things that may have been discussed in putting this together?
Uh, Council. Anything that would. Then. More simple fix. Look, for example, maybe the that an additional uh extinguisher needs to be provided. Uh, I think as long as one could do that, correct the 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 error. Point. I don't think there's any need to go with the validation process. I think. The. That is that. Is permitted in a zone. That's obviously that would require. Or so fixed to that, other than either the business going away or the. You, you know, going forward with the validation.
I. Because it said something to the effect of, you know, in the. There's a. A mutual agreement in the city applicant, they can easily resolve. It will be followed after satisfaction of mutually items, not then this. For example, say we go.
Um, to be honest, I'm sure that really would be necessary here. I think that that's the type. The staff can make a determination. Clearly, it's only in. There you. Fix the problem that this would would. I really don't. That's required to think that the city staff often, I'm certainly aware. There are issues that can. Always that the city staff. You know. And I think that's something that would continue. It's only. It is no other fix that this would, this would kick in. An ability validate that permit.
Yeah, and I would agree. I think, you know, it is the. Exercises. Stress. Doing it can as a city to. But you know, personally, just as a matter of just, uh, I think it's always good to have guidance sort of. To sort of allow for that as a standard. Sort of for that, but I do. Uh. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Do we have any additional questions or comments, Council? Councilmember James Cole. Please proceed.
Thank you, President. Since it discussed on. Last special exception is it's not permitted. It back to the Board of Appeals. And that. Forty-four, this is saying we've issued a. Allowed to be. That zone area. Why we would put it back to the city council and not to the Board of Appeals to be consistent with the rest of our code. Um, I would like to formally suggest we amend ordinance twenty forty-four to go back to the Board of Appeals and not the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole, for your recommendation. Air, you have anything? I didn't think so. Okay. Um. To them, I don't see any additional. Questions from the council looking. Um, I did have uh. With. Um. And there are the blocks are removed if they're. Uh. However, I do want to add more um from you, Todd, and it has to be today. It can be. If. If the proper procedure or the practice would be for the. This process or if. If. Board of Appeals, I. Assistance that. Ensure as Mayor Sidney said. You know, all block maybe. Sure if that's something. Look. Thing that I would be interested in knowing more, more if possible, your recommendation.
Be happy.
Are any additional questions from the council? Uh, Council. Jeffrey.
Um, thank you, President. Yeah, I was just wondering if recommendation was going to be uh just given to. Self, Madam President and the mayor. He have that uh information or if. Could um give us, give us his opinion, uh, national opinion um right now.
Um. If if you'd like. If if you'd like, I certainly give you my. Feelings this. That, as I said, the. Ordinance was drafted. It was after the. Of this county and that in that case it does. But you have to recall that in Prince George's County. Special exceptions are just by the zone. Ability. Will be by the county council, a different statutory scheme. In the city of Laurel. Have realities have the Board of Appeals, which is the final determiner, if you will, most exceptions, for example. So in the city of. Board of Appeals really is in most. Final body that makes. The zoning issue, the only zoning issue that usually comes account to the council. For rezoning, because that's a policy issue. But in. Is this where there only need to be finding, certain findings made. Those findings haven't satisfied, frankly. Would be added to to make that. Determining body.
Taub, Mayor Sidney.
This is just a question for Director Burr. Main, you got two zones there, right? You got the commercial village and you got. Is that. They had to say. Zones myself.
Commercial Village, yes.
Okay, and that's. Section of Main Street has commercial village. And our most. Yeah, but it's like. I think. Not operation. Probably half.
Correct, in some instances, yes.
Yeah. I'm trying to. Click his far off, you know, you might go. Feet three hundred feet, you'd be in another zone. And you go, maybe so it's kind of like connected. You know, but you know, the. Body service, that's what it is, trying to, since we made it arrow. So because the streets are so close to the building close together, you. Unless you. Doing what we doing right now. But just want to put it down in record as well.
Um, so it's. That there's. Able. To. From coming to. Our table. So but going bypassing us and the Board of Appeals. Saying that I see any reason why that would be an issue. Since they are the last stop pretty much for the decision made. Uh, before I go further, Councilmember Jeffrey Mills has a hand, his hand up. Feel free. Question. Or is that.
Um, Madam President, I would like to request that the. Make a decision and we can go. Of, I mean, Mr. Mr. Taub. You know, his his advisor. And which. We have. You can go, you know, either way, so. Few. Because for the for the council, that. Would it makes sense. The Board of Appeal. Which would happen or not, then then the council. And. So you suggest.
So I was just making a recommendation based on. How close the zones are, if we made it arrow and I. One conversation. Mr. Tough told us that we can make that decision as a council, but Councilman Cole saying that, so I don't know the code, I didn't read. I think he's going to be fine, but I was just trying. For the applicant, since this era that we made and the zones are so close, you know, that's what my thought process was.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Sidney or either. Deputy Director. Or. When you say that the streets are so close. And to not make it. It make it a little bit more difficult or how would it make it more difficult if we. Board of Appeals, I just want to make sure fully understand. If possible.
I was. About work in a minute in time, that's all. The mini mark cash checks as well.
Can't change anything. Them, Mayor Sidney.
I don't know, I'm just looking least restricted method, initial conversation. Here, so I mean. We get more information, more read things, but I was trying to not make it, when I say difficult, it might be. Word. Less. Something, you know, so I was. But if the code states what it states, then it's a code, but. Do that, but. Misinterpret something, but.
Some possible, I do hear what Councilmember. Is it possible for something to be. Council to show what the difference be we with the Board of Appeals? If we don't go with the Board of Appeals, I know that you're mentioning. Work, but. Some. There, and I just don't.
I had to cut you off, Madam President. That found decision, if you guys want. Yeah, it go to the Board of Appeals. I know they, I'm thinking they'll be favorable in this process. It was error, you know, so, but I was just, once again. Just need to drop anything up, you guys can make that, if you want to go to the Board of Appeals, we go through the process.
And President Clark, if I may. Confirm. The difference in terms of the. Paperwork. To the Board or the city council. It should be scheduled for a hearing, the planning commission's recommendation. To everybody. To be the Board. But I don't think there's going to be any difference in terms of the amount of paperwork or the amount of process, it's simply. Here, where do you want that hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Taub. Sound the recommendation that was. You, Mayor Sidney. For that additional information. Sound like Mr. Taub is sharing. I heard Councilmember. Sounds. To be on the. Have an issue with with that either, so it. Mid minimum. It's like. Action of. And reamending ordinance. Number two. Four, four. To include that we. For the. Border. Or. And making that. Um, for us to then discuss. That or. I'm sorry, public hearing for our next meeting for September eighth. We had so many discussions, I need to straighten my head. Uh, I, it looks like everyone is engaged with that. And that may be the best way to proceed. Amendment. Thank you, Councilmember Cole for making that recommendation. And I see. Council, you have an addition as well?
Yes, for a topic which is, you know, on the recommendation that have. Explicit reference to a simplified process. I know in the practice of law. Giving too much to implication just leads to. If we establish a policy to. I think it should include the simplified version when it's. Include the more comprehensive hearing, just like. Uh, more detailed or more more substantial issue, so I think. I recommend that also be included.
Nation, I think. So what we can do is. Previously to Mr. Taub, I think Taub. Didn't feel that that would be necessary. Are you recommending it again? So we have the two. Um, and. If you have further questions or you want to discuss. Also submit those questions to Deputy Director and or Mr. But it doesn't sound like. Actions on moving it to the September eighth meeting. Average it to. Correct? I'm going to say yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. Taub. Answering all those. And the Director Burr. Sidney for your input. Uh, hearing no questions. Or objections from the council, ordinance number two zero four four will be placed on the September eighth virtual. City Council meeting. Two recommendations.
Thank you.
All right, moving to agenda number eight. Res. Dash two five. Of the City Council of Laurel, sponsored by the President at the request of the administrator. Of moving procedures on. The middle council. Proceeds to members in meeting compliance with. Public Information. Act, City Election. Other statutory requirements to provide us with additional context and details. James Cornwall Shield from our. You now have.
Thank you and good evening, Council President Clark. Today I'm to present a resolution. On social media. Designed to support. As communications, holding the many legal and ethical responsibility. This. On the use of official and personal social media accounts, ensuring this with. All of. That we that you mentioned just a moment ago, as as city election code and general practices. Sizes transparency, accountability and. Action to promote trust and individual. Key elements of this document drawing clear. Official. Planning accounts, adhering to legal obligations, record retention, content. And. Guidelines and how and when to use city brand. And support resources that are available to the city. Our hope is that these. For future members to engage effectively. They have.
Director Cornwall Shield, are there any questions? In regards to this solution regarding. For the Laurel City. See your hand. Councilmember Simmons, please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, yeah, I do want to express appreciation to. Cornwall Shield. For the work. Been something that's been ongoing and and a lot. Lot of going, and thank you so much. As you mentioned, it's sort of. Pulling together. Sources. Public Information Act, the open meetings. Those are campaign files. Siding them into one place for use of reference for council, which I think is a huge. Providing very useful. In a cycle currently to be reminder for for all of us on council that it's very important to members of council. In that role that we never use. As a deus, as a sort of a form to our own campaigns, because that would constantly. Admission of. Reportable to the Ethics Commission, so I appreciate appreciate you doing that and again, it's a very. One thing I did want to make. This is sort of a council adopting this policy. But to also be assured that this policy is also or something similar is being adopted on the. Or off this as well. So we're all upholding. For the best. Should over time, because technology and social media and all that continuously evolves, if we see. Enhance into. You know, we can come back and amend this through the normal resolution process or through the adoption. So. One thing I think it's important to sort of point out. In the document, there are a little bit gradation. We're required to do by statute. Yes, there's some things that are, okay, this is a really good idea, you know, do. This isn't, there's things that are considered for certain. Same specific law, this is a really good way to. So that you really live. Uh, to good. Standards and things like that, so. Underlying principles. Thank you again. Much. And that's.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Any additional comments, questions, counsel? Uh, in addition, wanted to. Will have a training. Led Cornwall Shield. Natalie. September. Um, in regards to this resolution, so that the council can ask questions. And make comments or if they want to understand more how to. Um, properly. To suggest. Tips or recommendations that are located in this resolution, because we can't assume that. So it's for us to have that. Those questions that we can do it. Until our social media. Out privately and also with. I don't see any additions. Or comments. There are hesitations or. September. I don't see any. So no additional comments, questions or. Res. Eight dash two. Uh, this item will be placed on the September. Mayor and City Council meeting for. You, Director Cornwall Shield, we appreciate your work on this. Thank you, everyone. We had a busy agenda. Recession, but that's what we're here for. So to the staff, our consultants, the mayor and council for your time. Day, our next virtual meeting will be on September eighth at. Which you can view on our. Or Laurel TV on our YouTube channel with no. Things to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is adjourned at seven oh four P M. Have a great night.